Okay, ready?
Ready.
Call meeting in North Reading School Committee to order for May 20th. First item of business is public input. If there's anybody out there to be heard on any topics that are not on our agenda tonight, please make yourself known. Okay, seeing no one to be heard. Next, I'll call for our student report, and tonight we have Matt Leighton. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Webster. This past weekend, Leandra Skatter, Rachel Gudrow, Rory Stimson, and Kiana Lamont attended the Ryla program, the Rotary Youth Leadership Academy at Camp Rotary in Boxford. Kristen Shublin also attended as a counselor this year. Student council elections were held on Friday. The votes are still being counted. They should have resulted by tomorrow, hopefully. The first of two slam training sessions was held on Friday at the Aldersgate Church. Also on Friday was the variety show. Last Thursday, the National Art Society inducted their newest candidates. Today was the last day for seniors to purchase their prom tickets. The tickets were $150 per couple, and the prom will be held on June 3rd at the Weston and Waltham. This upcoming Wednesday, the senior art show will be held at 6:30 in the library, then at 7:30, the spring concert will be taking place in the auditorium. On this upcoming Thursday, the spring student recognition awards night will be taking place. For sports, the baseball team had their first loss of the season on Saturday against Masco 2-1. Also this past Saturday, the boys' and girls' track team participated in COWs, which was held down at the high school. The boys' tennis team played today against Loomfield with a 3-2 victory. And just on a side note, the high school has subscribed to a Twitter page, and anyone who wants to follow it can follow it @theattnorthreadinghs. For my student work tonight, I was going to talk about the tennis court situation. As a member of the tennis team with the displacement of the courts this season, being relocated to Northeast Tennis Center, I can say and report that it's been a very smooth season with no incidents. Everyone is very happy with the conditions at the Northeast Tennis Center. The staff there is great. The only change is that the courts, we play with clay courts, which is different from the hard courts, so we slide around more. So, beginning of the season, it was falling down on themselves, so it was kind of funny to watch, but as the season progressed, everyone's improved greatly, and it's been a great season. We've only had about three losses, so we're very happy, and we're qualified for the States now, so more to come.
Great. It's like a home-court advantage, though, because most of the other teams don't have clay courts either, right?
Yeah. I don't think anyone in the league has clay courts except us.
That's why we set it up that way, to give you guys an advantage, both you and the girls.
Do you actually play home matches, then, at the Northeast Tennis?
Yes, yep. We had one just now.
Nobody's complained about the?
No one, no. Again, the staff has been great there. It's great.
Transportation's not a problem?
Not at all, nope. We all, I mean, anyone who can't drive, all the old kids pitch in, we all give rides to everyone, so it's a great situation going on.
Kind of like softball.
Kind of like softball and ice hockey, anything else.
Swimming, gymnastics.
Yeah, wrestling.
Wrestling, et cetera. Questions?
I am now following North Reading High School.
Anything go down there?
It's very cute, those little bumblebee. It's not bumblebees, it's more.
Mr. Bernard was very excited sitting up the page. I helped him out as a student senate representative, and he's so excited. He's like, "I tweeted this, I tweeted this." I'm like...
I'm now retweeting.
Yeah.
I attended the variety show Friday night. I know Mrs. Will, it was outstanding.
Outstanding. We had a great time.
Some of the talent we have in the high school is unbelievable, and I loved sitting there, thinking about how in two years, we'll be sitting in a brand-new performance center to see, you'll be able to hear everybody and see everybody and have better sight lines, et cetera.
Mr. Bowers was there as well.
Yes, I saw Mr. Bowers. The other thing, I know, I just want to note that for the sports teams, all of our spring sports teams combined are winning at an approximate 70 percent, winning percentage for the spring. I can't remember a season where we had such a high winning percentage for all of our teams. I know the track team, the boys' track team won the COW league. I think baseball's already wrapped up their division in Cape Valley, and they had won 24 games in a row over two seasons, and softball's having a great season. The tennis teams, I know the girls' tennis team is also doing extremely well, so great job to all our student athletes. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move the agenda around a little bit, and tonight, we're going to go age before, well, we're just going to go lower age before older age tonight, and we're going to have...
Relatively.
Yes, relatively. The Batch Elder School Exploravision National Winner Presentation, and we're going to have some of the students and their advisors and teachers come up and make a presentation.
We're actually missing one of our teams.
Oh.
Is he? It's walking in right now, so.
You can...
We have to move around.
Oh, we have to move anyways, so we'll move really slowly. Yeah, that's slow motion. Who's this?
I'm sorry.
You could stall for a minute while we're done.
Yep.
You need some transmission music.
Yes.
Now, before you start, we should announce that this team of fifth graders, fourth graders? Third graders.
Third graders won the national championship in their category, and so they're going to give us a presentation tonight, let us know what they did, let us know why it was fun, what they liked about it, right? So whenever you're ready, go ahead. And speak up, okay, so everybody on TV can hear you and everything else, all right?
And that's out of 5,000 entries.
Right, 5,000 entries.
Good evening, school committee, members and guests. Our project is called the SIGHT system. The SIGHT system stands for Safety Interactive Guided Holographic Technology.
The SIGHT system is based on holographic technology. Our hologram is a three-dimensional projection of a building that shows firemen and policemen the safest way to enter and leave a building during an emergency.
Okay, before you, make sure you move the mic over to in front of everybody, okay, so we can make sure that it gets heard. There you go.
Our video will show what the SIGHT system is and how it allows for coordination of public safety, fewer lives lost, and less property damaged.
We hope that 20 years from now...
The SIGHT system helps firefighters communicate and strategically plan their attack on a fire before they reach the scene.
You check out the hall and you go, "Call the fire." Okay.
The holographic wall at the station projects the holographic views of the building, including a 3D floor plan with heat, smoke, and carbon monoxide sensors.
Look like the fire in the back of the house on the second floor.
Firefighters on the fire truck also see the hologram from their spans on their way to the scene.
Looks like we should have just through to that door.
Do we have to go upstairs?
Sounds like a plan.
Together, the firefighters map out this strategic plan. Once they're at the scene, they're going to enter face with the hologram so that everyone is aware of the accurate point of action.
Inside the face shield, firefighters see the hologram of the floor plan behind the closed doors in front of them.
The oxygen levels in their tanks are also monitored in the hologram by the captain at the scene. The SIGHT system allows for coordination of public safety, fewer lives lost, and less property damage.
The SIGHT system satisfies!
We hope that 20 years from now, the SIGHT system is used across the country. Thank you.
The SIGHT system is based on holographic technology. Our, actually, wrong one. We want to thank North Reading Fire Department, especially Mr. Stats for helping us learn about current technology that North Reading firefighters use to fight fires.
Any questions or comments?
Congratulations.
It's a great job.
When are you going to DC?
Um, we leave...
Make June Fest.
Yeah, we leave June Fest.
You going to the patent office?
You know, one of the things that you should be thinking about as you develop this is, you know about Google Glass? Have you seen what that is? It's this little, it's like a glasses frame, and it has a little tiny screen in one corner, but when you look at it, it looks like a big screen, so that might be something that the firemen could wear, and they could really see, you know, really clearly on that Google Glass. So, when you patent this, you might want to make sure you have the patent for that also, because you don't want anybody else to get that.
I think I saw that on the screen.
Google Glass?
Yeah, it wasn't Google Glass, it was before Google Glass.
Before Google Glass. But that was, now, how did you come up with this idea?
So, this wasn't our first idea. Our first idea was a concussion sensor, where if you, like, in any sport, you got hit really hard, you could tell if you had a concussion or not, but then we figured out that that was already created as an app, so we didn't have that much time left. And Anika, she wanted to do something that had to do with public safety, because her dad's a police officer, and we, from the start, we wanted to do a hologram, so we just combined those things, and we came up with the SIGHT system.
It's a great idea.
You guys should be retired by the time you're in the fifth grade.
I know.
Oh, my God.
So, what was it like at the, like, at the contest? Did you show the video? Did you have to do another kind of demonstration? What was your presentation like?
We just did the same thing.
Same thing you did tonight?
Well, we did it at the Batch Elder School where we are from. We did it for the regional winners, for the second and third, but that's pretty much what we did.
Wow. Any other questions or comments?
That's a great job. I mean, first out of 5,000 is pretty good.
Yeah.
And this is the second year in a row that the team from the Batch Elder School has won the national award for Exploravision, so it's quite impressive.
Who's the principal at the Batch Elder?
Mr. Klein.
He must be doing...
Actually, everybody's being very modest here, which is a great characteristic, but I'll take the opportunity. The Toshiba Exploravision program is one that we're very proud of. Our third-grade team gives every student the opportunity to participate, and then one of the things that's nice is the teachers serve as coaches, but the parents work as the mentors. So, they do most of this work outside of school, with consult with staff if needed, you know, more on the technical side. So, it really connects the school to home for this one big project. Mrs. Wall, I know, and who else, Mrs. Jennings helped put together the application, and so we've done this now, I think, for nine years. We've had regional winners, I think, seven out of the nine years. We've had one second-place finisher and two nationals.
Wow.
So, it is a great opportunity. The students all got underwater video cameras from Toshiba when they were a regional winner. They get the all-expense paid trip to Washington DC, and each student gets a what?
Ten thousand dollars.
Wow.
Were you going to speak?
No, I wasn't going to speak.
Okay, because I was waiting.
The batch gets a computer.
And the batch gets the computer that they worked on to do their website.
Excellent.
It's really a big deal, and these kids, and the parents, and the teachers do such a fantastic job. I can't take any credit for any of that stuff.
Don't sign those bonds over to your parents, either.
Now, when you, when you get, when you make your presentation, everybody's done. Do you sit there, and they announce the winner, or do they tell you when you come back?
Um, well, we found out, we were just in our classroom, and they put, Mr. Klein came in, and then Law came in, and then somebody from Toshiba came in, and then announced in front of the whole class, but...
Were you nervous?
Um, when I saw them, I thought, when I heard Law's voice, I looked around and saw them, so I was a little nervous, but I didn't know.
Well, that's a great accomplishment.
It certainly is.
Good job. Thanks for coming in tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
That's awesome. He can stay, oh, yeah, he's open tonight.
Mail.
But I don't think they're here yet. I don't think all of the high school students are here yet.
I'll just stand in between.
So, maybe we can go around. I told him about...
Policy review.
So, we'll just get back to the agenda, and when everybody else is here for the high school. Thanks, Laura. I don't know, when I was in the third grade, I know I wasn't, I wasn't developing anything like that in the third grade. How about you?
I was there for two years, and I didn't do anything like that.
Good job, thanks.
Thank you.
The piece that you're kind of easy to miss in that is that they, as Abby said, they found out two weeks before that...
That's the crazy part.
That what they had was already invented, and so as a result, they had to do something else.
They had to switch two weeks before.
But that was a really good idea, though. The concussion thing is so big, but there was good that they, you know, they saw that there's already some products out there to work with that, so...
Saw it on TV.
Right.
I just like that they worked as a team to figure it out.
Yeah.
That's pretty nice.
Really good.
I'm not sure that all of the members of the clubs are here. I know that Mr. Bernard plans on attending as well, so maybe when we see him...
We'll wait for Mr. Bernard to get here.
Good.
So, we're going to go back to our regular agenda. We do have some students coming in from the high school tonight, and Mr. Bernard, to present some new clubs to us, so as soon as Mr. Bernard and all the students are here, we'll proceed with the club proposals, okay? But I'm sure the high school students will be interested in hearing the update on the middle school and high school building project while they're waiting, so, Mr. Tanya Willis?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Webster. Two secondary school building committee meetings were held since the last school committee meeting, one on Tuesday, May 7th, and one on Tuesday, May 14th, beginning at 5:30 PM. In terms of a construction update, the roof steel has been constructed over Main Street, the concrete floor was poured on floor three of the high school academic wing, the access road is taking shape, and truckloads of soil and materials have been removed from the site. The pump system for the wastewater treatment plant will be installed this summer over on the side of the high school where the student parking is currently housed. Work will begin right after the students leave for the summer. Mr. Bowers and Mr. Venetia attend the weekly construction meeting, so I'd like to offer them any other updates that they've heard since the last SSBC meeting?
Cliff, one's good first. About the only thing that I could probably add is that the foundations are in now for most all of the gym. There's just one little section that isn't finished off yet, and that's used for access to get in and out of that area of the site, and very shortly, they'll start backfilling the, against the wall. It takes a few days for that to set up, and so they can load it. And then the other thing that's been going on is the retaining wall along the roadway. There's a curve in the roadway, as everybody's aware, and there's a steep embankment, and there's a retaining wall going in there, and that's under construction, so that's coming along well.
And again, if you've noticed, the steel is going up now for the auditorium. Just look out the window there. And the cafeteria and the auditorium steel is going up, and that's actually right on schedule. It wasn't supposed to start until Monday, and it actually started on Friday. So, you can really see things taking shape out here. As far as schedule's concerned, I think right now, we're probably even Steven on schedule.
The 26 days of, that we were behind the last meeting, we have now, they've done some stacking of elements in the schedule, and they brought that back down to zero float. You can only do that a few times before it gets into trouble, and we still have some issues with the plumbing bid.
We actually voted to approve, the Secondary School Building Committee voted to approve the guaranteed maximum price on the Gilbane, the contractor's contract, so that's been locked in now. It's going to be signed by the town administrator, but the guaranteed maximum price is a hundred and...
Hundred one for the construction.
Yeah, for the construction, a hundred one million plus, but we're locked into that now, so everything cost-wise should go smoothly from here on in. That doesn't mean we're not going to incur some unforeseen things, but we have contingency built in, both for the contractor and for us as the project owner, to deal with any unforeseen circumstances, so hopefully, everything's on schedule.
And for those, if you don't drive up here, and if you just look from 62, you say, "Oh, that's a nice big building they're building up on the hill," until you drive up here, and the amount of construction, I think, is shocking, and how much they've gotten done is shocking. Basically, all of the foundations are done, except for that small portion of the gym, and the steel is going up on just about every building except for the gym right now, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, and the other thing that is a little bit of a milestone is that the drywall contractor will be starting work within the six-week look-ahead period.
Which means they'll start closing the building in, so...
The high school classroom, correct?
Yep.
So, yeah, things are going...
Very exciting.
Things are going as well as can be expected with a project this big. It's a huge project. The town's never taken on anything this big before, so...
Not even remotely.
Not even remotely this big, so...
And in terms of the design update, at the last meeting, the architects reviewed the design of the team building at the turf field. The construction of the team building will take place at the end of the project when the fields are completed, so we had a chance to really take a look at those drawings in detail. As far as bids are concerned, there were two bid protests, one against the HVAC bid and one against the plumbing bid. The HVAC bid was rewritten and posted, and the plumbing bid hearing at the Attorney General's office took place on Monday, May 13th. A request to expedite the finding was made, so that decision should be sent to the OPM in the very near future. I don't believe it's...
The rebids came back in on the HVAC, so we have those in. I think it was just slightly higher, but nothing...
$14,000.
Yeah, nothing significant.
Change higher.
And on the plumbing bids, a decision, the AG has made a decision. It's not printed yet. I'm hoping, I was hoping we're going to get it today.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
But I would expect it any, any minute now, so that's really the last bid cliff, right? The last subject that we have to be concerned about. All the other bids are in, and we're moving forward.
That's the last one that we have to worry about, is the elevators. We actually did get a bid, a bid, and we have recommended a ward for that.
Just to follow on, on the storage bill, on the team room building, it's going to have a significant amount of storage. One of the, one of the things that, you know, the turf field and the facility down there is awesome, but we have no place to store things down there, so we have these temporary containers, we have stuff stored outside. Our hope is that we can get most of the equipment that's down there stored in this building, so the facility itself will be pretty clean. That's one of our goals. And that room will also serve as locker rooms for the teams, halftime of football games, halftime of soccer games, et cetera, the teams. It'll be, it'll be right adjacent to the turf field, so the teams will be able to go up there and, you know, if it's cold, get out of the cold, if it's hot, get out of the heat, if it rains. And we also made a request that the visiting team locker rooms in the winter have less heat, and in the summer have less cooling to give us a little more home-field advantage.
You want to get our winning percentage up to 75.
Exactly, exactly. So, we'll see if the contractor complies with that.
Both meetings included executive sessions for the purpose of discussing potential litigation and contract negotiations. So, the next meeting of the Secondary School Building Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, May 28th, beginning at 6:30 PM in the high school modular cafeteria. And at 7:00 PM, the entire Secondary School Building Committee will move to the high school auditorium for the premiere showing of a video that has been proposed and created by high school students about the building project, so we're looking forward to that movie. That's it.
Also, that night, the SSBC is going to get a walk-through of the project at 5:30. So, members who don't come up during the day and put on the hard hat can actually get a full tour of the, of the project. Okay. Do we want to move to the, I don't see Mr. Bernard here.
Mr. Bernard's not here yet?
No.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to move to the policies? Do you want to move to something else?
Sure.
Okay, so we have a couple of policy, second reading for revisions of policies. Cliff, we have two that we need to review, JHCDR and JHCF.
JHC, yes. CDR, JHC. JHCDR, hazing regulations. We changed this by taking off the first paragraph, two paragraphs, and changing the fines for hazing to be not more than one year, and removing the words "100 days" from it.
Okay.
I think that is all the change.
Yeah, that was a mistake we had last week.
That's it.
Chairman, move to approve a second reading policy, JHCDR.
For the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
And JHCF, reporting suspected child abuse or neglect. We removed, we deleted the first two paragraphs and did a, basically, a new rewriting of it.
And we also, I think, changed the employees and personnel thing to be consistent throughout the entire policy.
Motion for me now, so I'll make a motion to approve policy JHCF for a second reading.
Second.
Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous. Thanks, Cliff.
Only two?
Two, that's it, we're done.
So disappointing.
We've got to start going over the whole book again, though.
Only took three years.
It only took three years to review it, so...
Seven years?
Okay, I think we'll, I don't want to get into the school committee evaluation right now, because that will take too long, so...
Right.
Do you want to give us an update on the director of pupil personnel search?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The search, or the application deadline took place on May 9th, so all applications were due. I'm pleased to report that we received 31 applications for the position of Director of Pupil Personnel Services. We went through a screening process last week, and we narrowed the applications down to six potential candidates for this position, so we are in the process of scheduling those interviews for May 28th, 29th, and 30th. We have a 12-member interview committee that will meet with me this Wednesday to go through an orientation session in preparation for the interviews, and then the following week, well, after we interview, on the 30th, we will deliberate and hopefully identify two or more candidates to move forward as finalists. Those finalists will come in the next week and meet with the administrative council to go through a second round of interviews. I will be part of that. I want to say that our Director of Academic Services, Patrick Daly, will be facilitating the interviews this time, where building capacity of our central office administrators to conduct these executive searches, and so I will be present, but he will be taking the lead during the interview process. The finalists will have a second interview with me, as well as the entire administrative council, and we're looking to arrange an opportunity to bring the finalists back during the day, so that parents will have an opportunity to come in and engage in an informal dialogue with each of the finalists, and provide some feedback to the administrative council around the finalists and their impressions of those individuals that we brought forward. Then, we hope to be able to bring one successful candidate forward from that process to the school committee on June 10th, because the school committee does have appointing authority of the Director of Pupil Personnel Services.
But unlike with the business director of finance and operations, we will not participate in the interviews.
No, that is correct. It is based on my recommendation to the school committee.
And do we have the representatives from the parent support group on the interview committee?
We do. The interview committee is made up of the president of the CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We have representatives of our teachers, our paraprofessionals, administrators, the parent representative, the assistant PPS director is sitting on this, as well as the PPS accountant, so we do have a wide range of individuals that definitely have an interest in the hiring of this individual.
Okay. Do we have questions or comments? Thanks, Kathy. I see Mr. Bernard is, is everybody here, Mr. Bernard?
Everyone is here.
Okay.
We're ready.
If you want to bring up in whatever order, we can hear these proposals now.
And we will be having...
Okay. We're going in.
You want to use yours?
Yeah, let's do it.
You set up second, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we need one of the advanced, the slide events?
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good.
It's installing myself right now. Advance this, it's up here, that's, I'll show you as much as I can. I believe this middle one is advanced?
No, the top one advances it.
The middle one, and then this one reverses it. This label. So, open the folder of your file.
Are you ready now? So, are you ready, sir?
Yep, I'll say.
Oh, there it is, down in the lower right left-hand corner.
Do you need the speakers?
No.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. We have three student presentations for new extracurricular activity clubs to be offered at the high school next year. So, thank you for allowing us to come in and to present these to you. I have reviewed with Mrs. Willis the presentations. The students are very anxious to, and have been working diligently, I should say, for the last, in some cases, as much as maybe two, two and a half months, preparing their presentations and gathering some student support for the club. So, with your indulgence, what I'd like to do is, you may remember Nick Phillips from last year. He came before you and did a presentation on the American Red Cross Chaplain, which has been very successful this year. I think in my experience, it's the first time a student got an ovation for their presentation of a new club. He did a fine job, and I think it's fair to say that Nick will do an equally nice job tonight presenting to you his idea for a Future Business Leaders of America Club at the high school. So, I'm going to turn it over to Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard, and I'd also like to thank all of you for giving me the time to talk tonight. Okay, so as Mr. Bernard said, I am presenting the Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, which is a club, oh, there we go. Finally got it. Thank you. So, FBLA is a nonprofit education association, and there are more than a quarter million students preparing for careers in business. And when I say more than a quarter million students, that is just the high school level. Now, FBLA is broken down into four divisions. There is the high school level, which is what we would be concerned with, and that has over a quarter million students preparing. There is the middle level, which is for middle school and under the high school level. There is the post-secondary level, which is for college students and grad students. And then, there is a professional division for those that are working in the careers of business and still are in touch with the organization. The organization is organized on local, state, and national levels, so each town or school has their own chapter, and they would fall under a certain, whatever state they belong in, they would be a member of their respective state groups. And then, all of those will then report up to the national level, which would be the FBLA of the United States. And it's the oldest and greatest business student organization in the world, which was founded in nineteen forty, so it's been going for a while. One very important element of FBLA that I would like to highlight and talk about is the competitive events. These competitive events are held in the spring. I believe it's early April, and each year they're held in every single FBLA chapter across your country that would like to participate has the option to participate. These competitive events are held online, so each student takes a test online prior to the State Leadership Conference. At these conferences, each chapter that participates in the competition is present, and discussions about FBLA and topics, as well as they announce the winners of the competitions. Each competition, which is the state, each competition for each state is broken down into some categories. I've included some categories here. Now, how the test is administered, each student may take a maximum of three categories, three tests in each category, but there is no maximum number of students that can participate. So, anyone that would like to participate is more than welcome to. The competition is held at Bentley University each year, and the winners are then announced at the Leadership Conference, which proceeds the competition, and the winners are then eligible to advance to nationals and compete in the larger competition. Another important part of FBLA is February Frenzy. It's a term we use at FBLA to describe their sort of recognition and recruit project to increase their awareness about it and attempt to recruit new members. And there's more than five thousand six hundred chapters. Each chapter participates, and the real goal of this campaign is to increase the awareness of FBLA and to try to get as many people to participate and know that they have the option to participate, and really increase the awareness of the club and the competitions. Each chapter is awarded a recognition for how well they do in recruiting and creating events. I've included some activities geared towards recruitment here, and each chapter that is deemed the most, excuse me, they're recognized the most for their work in recruiting new members is then awarded, and they are also recognized at the National State Leadership Conference, which they also, this is the same conference in which the winners of the competitions are announced. So, the impact at North Reading High School, it'll provide an extra source of business education and will enable students to explore careers in the field of business. North Reading High School has a great business department, and I think that there could be a lot more recognition and awareness of students in the field of business because there's just so many topics that students could undertake, and I feel like this would give, it's a great opportunity for students to understand more about careers in different aspects and different fields that students could eventually, if they wanted to, pursue. Some benefits of FBLA are challenge competitive events, which of course is a great part of it, and it gives a, provide an atmosphere and experience where students can learn to compete and represent their town and their school in a positive manner. Another benefit of FBLA is that scholarships and awards and other recognition opportunities, which are presented at the leadership conferences, are awarded to chapters and members who have shown excellence and that they really take this seriously, and they're dedicated to FBLA, and these students are eligible to get scholarships from FBLA. The conferences and demonstrations from FBLA are very exciting, and they're geared towards sort of unifying every single chapter and making sure that all the chapters are on the same wavelength, and they all sort of know what they're doing, and it really helps providing an opportunity for each chapter and their respective officers to voice their opinions and sort of work together to improve the FBLA for all the chapters. Once again, there are over a quarter million other young leaders around the nation where there are great networking opportunities for each student and the chapters to establish. And once again, it's a great opportunity for students to gain knowledge and experience in business careers and business-related fields, so they have just sort of an extra source outside of school in the academic, the business education. So, it's just more so that they can learn even more and explore and kind of get their feet wet in the careers of business if they are interested in. So, here is the mission statement of FBLA, which goes for both the state and national organization. And some goals of FBLA are to develop competitive and aggressive business leadership. So, that's another trait that not really is stressed, I would say, as much in school, because it's not really, it's not going into in-depth, and a lot of students can pick that up, and that's a good trait to learn that they wouldn't necessarily receive in the high school education. Strengthen the confidence in themselves and their work, which they get to display themselves in both the competitions and the conferences, so really develops a chance for the students to take pride in what they do and show themselves so they can reach the best of their abilities, and they can display that in front of a large audience. It can create more interest and understanding of American business enterprise, which once again, outside of the normal and the traditional high school business education, provides an extra opportunity to go more in-depth and explore more aspects of careers in business. It encourages members in the development of individual projects that commit to the improvement of home business and community. So, once again, organized in the state, local, and national chapters, so it's focused on promoting the education and the work that the students do of the town and chapters, and also on the states that they work together to display to the national level. And it develops some good characteristics for citizenship and patriotism. FBLA is a very prestigious group, and it's recognized across the nation. And it encourages and practices efficient money management, which is another topic that is great to learn for students. And I think that that's a great trait, that they may not necessarily learn from high school, but it's still very important that they learn, which helps later on careers, and it's a good life trait to have. It encourages scholarship and promotes school loyalty, so it gives them a chance to really display their schoolwork and to work hard and to see, they can actually see the benefits that they can get, and they can really feel proud about themselves. Assist students in the establishment of occupational goals, so once again, it can help them explore into, if there's a potential career they're interested in, or if they weren't sure and they just wanted to learn more about it, that's another great thing that FBLA offers. And it facilitates the transition from school to work, once again, with the different divisions, and moving on to later on college, if they would want to study business, and then later on pursuing a career in business. Great. Are there any questions?
Jerry? What's the level of interest? I mean, have you gauged how many people are interested?
Yes, yes. I have, once again, I haven't, it's not an exact number, and I haven't been doing, but just pretty much by word of mouth that I've been recruiting, and I have about some twenty-odd kids that are interested just by word of mouth. Once again, I will put in some advertisement in both the announcements, and we'll try to get a newsletter out, put in some flyers, and focus on recruiting some more new members. And, but definitely, based on the amount of interest in the business club, the business, excuse me, classes at North Reading High School, I can tell that there's a lot of kids that are interested in business and learning more about it.
Okay, good. Sounds like a good way to get some networking going.
Right.
For high school.
Yes, definitely.
One question, John. This may be partially for you. I like the idea about students learning about money management. I think that it seems like every year, kids come out of high school with less information and less desire to manage money, and it's clearly an important skill. Is there any way that courses or seminars are offered that even if you're not a member of the club, you could come and sit in on a money management thing, or? It's just something that you could consider. I think that'd be, I know we do have some courses at the school that.
We do, and we have people that do come in from the Reading Cooperative Bank, Jeff Seines, who's a financial advisor, he for years, and was just recently in again at the high school. And I think, I would be willing to bet that something like the Future Business Leaders of America, which I don't think Nick mentioned, the teacher who would be, who signed on to advise the club, is a teacher in our business education department, who has done some networking by having people who are in practice, in business, come to the school and speak to students as part of the classes that he teaches. I could only see that expanding under something like this. So, I think, you know, it's a little bit speculative on my part, but I think the answer is yes. I would be willing to bet that there would be people that would engage through the FBLA to come to the school and speak to students and teachers about their, kind of the practical aspects of their work, which in turn could give some important skills to students that they may not be receiving otherwise.
Probably contact Sean Colain from the batch, too, because he had some third graders in here that might. Exactly.
I just wanted to make a comment that, this is the second time I've heard you speak, and I'm just really impressed. Your presentation skills are so good, and I understood everything you were saying, and it's nice when people.
That doesn't always happen.
When Jerry presents, I have no clue what he's saying, but I just wanted to share that with you, because it's so important to, when we hear this information, we really do want to know, you know, what it's about and how you're trying to foster activity at school and interest in new things. So, I really appreciate that you took the time to present to us.
Thank you. I appreciate feedback.
I agree, and based on your track record with the Red Cross Club, the things I've heard about how great that club has done.
It is.
I have no concern that this won't, you know, get off the ground and be arousing success. And I second what Karen had to say. In fact, I appreciate when the students come in and put some thought and effort into proposing the club, not just saying, "We want to have this club, okay, because we want to see why you want to do it and to convince us." And, you know, from my point of view, this is a really good idea. Kathy, should we borrow these individually?
Yes, please.
So, unless there's any more questions, I will accept the motion to create the Future Business Leaders of America Club for a two-year pilot.
I have it, John. Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're looking for a job in a few years, give me a call.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
You too.
Thank you, Mrs..
Yes.
Okay.
I guess.
Fancy clicker.
It's the little button in the middle, okay?
Okay.
Okay, so the second club proposal is for a gay-straight alliance at the high school. And I have, similar to Nick's presentation, I have Sarah Lilly and Frankonia Berg, who are two seniors at the high school, who have, again, like Nick, have been meeting with me over the course of the last couple of months or so, and have done a nice job of putting together a presentation that I think speaks very well of their desire to have a formal extent. I think the work that they've done in the community, which had begun under the direction of Erica Hansen, when she was here as the Youth Services Director, but now to bring a chapter into the school. And I think it's a nice idea, and they have a nice presentation for you. So, I'm going to ask Sarah and Frankie if they want to take the reins here, and he can walk through your presentation if it helps, okay?
I suppose I can say that our presentation is more unique, because we have existed since October two thousand and eleven, and with our group, we meet weekly to talk about current issues and just kind of to provide a safe space for people of all orientations to be together. And last June, we actually held a successful awareness concert, I suppose you could say, at Ipswich River Park, and we had a nice turnout for that. And so, our mission statement for the group is, "We, as a gay-straight alliance, exist to provide a safe space for the expression of people of all orientations."
Try again. Did that for Nick, too.
Three times a charm.
Yeah, one more.
Oh, no.
Okay. It did work for him.
Is it the middle one, John? Is she pushing the right button?
Yeah.
Yep, are going backwards.
With the transparencies.
What about the bottom one?
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bernard. So, a few quick facts about GSAs. They are made up of any student who wants to join. They don't have to be gay, or bisexual, or transgender, or lesbian, or anything. It is, that's why it's called a gay-straight alliance. And they're just like any other club. We have advisors. We would hold regular meetings, host events, and they're open to anyone who is committed to the mission. The first GSA was formed in nineteen ninety-eight, when a straight student wanted to educate fellow students about the homophobic bullying and harassment that went on at her school. And she went to her history teacher, Glessen founder, Kevin Jennings, and proposed a club, saying, "You're gay and I'm straight, so let's call it a gay-straight alliance." And, side note, Glessen is the National Gay-Straight Alliance Education Organization, stands for Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network. And Glessen defines a GSA as "any club that works to make their school safer," and it specifically addresses anti-LGBT behavior. The majority of clubs registered with Glessen refer to themselves as gay-straight alliances, but some go by other names like Prism or Q&amp;A, which would stand for Queers and Allies. And some little milestones, as of two thousand and eight, and this is from the Glessen website, there are four thousand GSAs nationally. Are these in Massachusetts? It might be Massachusetts. I'm not sure if I got it.
Seems like a state-level statistic.
It is a state-level statistic, then. They have a couple websites.
Oh, that went backwards. I got the forwards now. We're good. It was not the middle button. It was the bottom button.
Well done.
So, now, we have some statistics, and what you see here is, these statistics for schools with GSAs show more supportive staff, more feeling of safety, fewer homophobic remarks, and more positive remarks. And why is this important to the school's atmosphere? Well, when students don't feel safe going to school, sometimes they miss school or cannot focus in school because they're afraid of their classmates making fun of them. So, we feel that with a GSA, it would make the students more aware that there is a population not of, not only gay people and straight and transgender, but also their allies.
And now, with, this is, these are some statistics that were found about. And now, with, this is, these are some statistics that were found about the, what bullying does to students and this is one of the big reasons why GSAs are needed. So you can see GB stands for Gay and Bisexual and you can see how prevalent the suicide rates, both attempted ends and just consideration of suicide is among youth LGBT populations because bullying is an epidemic. It is such a problem in every school, but ones with GSAs are reportedly much safer and more accepting environments for students of all kinds.
The effects of bullying on LGBTQ youth. Seventy-one point three percent of students hear homophobic remarks in school every day and forty percent of all homeless youth are LGBT. Eighty-one point nine percent of LGBTQ students have reported being verbally harassed. Almost forty percent have reported being physically harassed and almost twenty percent are physically assaulted at school all because of their sexual orientation. In specific spaces are bathrooms, locker rooms, gym class, generally places where gender is more of an issue.
And we've asked, been asking around our school and our peers and our friends why they would want a GSA in the school. And some people want to remain anonymous, some people just gave their initials and their grade. And there was overwhelming support. This was just a small bit of the quotes that we got from people. Things like, "Having a GSA in the school would lead to more equality and would show people that it's okay to be who you are and it lets everyone else know that the GSA exists." Because even though we have existed through the Youth Services, we've had a pretty small population because a lot of people don't know that we're there. Because not everyone looks at, you know, the North Reading Patch or the Youth Services Newsletter or anything like that. And another one of our friends said, "I think we need a GSA because people don't know what the GSA means." And when we had our bake sales last year, a lot of people were coming up and asking what it meant and it was all very positive, which is good, which I think is another reason why we should have it in the school because we have not had anyone say negative things about it, like, "Oh, that's so weird, you don't need that in here." None of our peers have said that. And there has been overwhelming support from the people that we know. And I think that having it would make the people that we don't know and maybe who aren't aware of what their language and bullying does, maybe it's unintentional, but having the GSA, having the presence there would make us visible as a population of LGBTQ students and allies. That people might put a face to the bullying and they wouldn't, maybe they wouldn't stop, but they would at least curb it and be aware of what they're doing.
And I feel to wrap up that this is the perfect time to make this club because I think it fits perfectly into the new, the rubrics of the school and the whole, the idea of 21st century learning because this is an issue that we face in the 21st century and I think it's something that we need to bring to North Reading High School.
Questions, comments?
You had said you've been meeting since October of 2011?
Yes.
Informally or is that as a club or?
We started under the direction of the former Youth Services Director, Erica Hansen. So we're through Youth Services right now and we still have meetings every Thursday night, but it's a limited audience.
How about the level of interest is, can you tell me what that is?
Yes, we...
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay, good.
And you already, do you have, I'm assuming you have people, since you're both graduating, who'll step up and...
Yes. And we also have two advisors already lined up.
Oh, that's good.
I have one question. So I know that the school has the Alliance, it used to be called, I think, the Alliance Against Racism, but I think it's changed now?
It was, it was at one time the Alliance Against Racism and Violence and it, in over, I'd say maybe the last half a dozen years, became the Alliance Against Intolerance.
So I'm assuming, I mean, there's obviously some good synergy between what you're doing and, and what they're doing, so I'm assuming that when it makes sense, the two clubs could work together on things.
Yes.
I think that would be really effective. Any other questions?
Another good, well-thought-out presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing the research, really appreciate it. To know further questions, at this time, I will extend the motion to approve the Gay-Straight Alliance Club for North Reading High School for a two-year pilot period.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And one more.
The next club proposal is Samantha's Harvest and Marissa Foti has been the lead student representative, bringing this proposal to me and then ultimately to you folks. So I'm going to let Marissa introduce everyone that she has here with her tonight. I really think you're going to get a, a special treat here on, on kind of the philosophy behind Samantha's Harvest. I'm really, like all of the students who make their presentations for clubs, very, very proud and impressed with the initiative that they undertake. But I think in, in the case of Marissa, as a freshman student, to have, have come to me this past winter, probably sometime around maybe February, we first began talking about this, it really is a very inspirational idea that she has, one that I'm hoping you find equally inspirational and also something worthy of, of bringing to, to our schools. So Marissa, why don't you introduce, folks, and you can walk through the presentation, okay?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Marissa Foti.
I'm Rob Gibbs. I'm the co-founder and president of Samantha's Harvest.
Hi, my name is Delia Mooney. I was one of the original founders of the Samantha's Harvest Club at Reading Memorial High School.
I'm Julia McQuade and one of the other advisors for Samantha's Harvest.
So Marissa, how this works here is if you move the button on the bottom, I think it is. Yep, okay, so that bottom button will advance the slide the way you want it to, okay?
Samantha's Harvest works to raise awareness by providing funding for programs and organizations that directly enhance the lives of individuals with Down Syndrome. Here are some of the history of Samantha's Harvest. In 2001, it was founded by Rob and Lisa Gibbs after learning their daughter Samantha had Down Syndrome. In 2002 was the first annual golf tournament. Also in 2002, where they were presented with the first annual Samantha's Buddy Award. In 2003, they were awarded the first annual scholarship. In 2005 was the first casino night. In 2006 was the first time Reading High School started the Samantha's Harvest Club. In 2008, the first, the first annual comedy night. In 2009, in 2009, they sponsored the fashion show and in 2011 was the first annual road race. Here are some of the beneficiaries of Samantha's Harvest Club. Samantha's Harvest has donated over 200,000 to like-minded organizations while providing Here are some of the goals of the North Reading High School Chapter. We want to celebrate inclusion in schools. We want to spread the word to end the word, which is putting an end to the use of the R-word. We want to educate the school commu- community about Down Syndrome. We understand in that educating our youth that those with disabilities are capable, strong, smart individuals. Together, we can all move mountains. Here are some of the activities. We do a buddy walk in Lake Quinapaw in Wakefield. We want to spread the word to end the word, which is collecting signatures school-wide to pledge to eliminate the demeaning use of the R-word. Also, we volunteer at Samantha's Harvest fundraising events such as golf tournaments, road races, and comedy nights. We want to read to youth at North Reading schools so they're aware about it. And we want to sponsor an inclusive school celebration. And this is why I want to bring Samantha's Harvest to my school. When I was younger, I always knew that I wanted to be a teacher so I could make a difference in a child's life. This past winter, I had the pleasure of meeting Samantha Gibbs and I immediately fell in love with her. Sammy has a gift of making people smile. Wherever she goes, she touches everyone's life. She has taught me acceptance. I knew after meeting this beautiful little girl that I wanted to be a special education teacher. I want to make a positive impact and a difference in the lives of children with developmental disabilities. Also, just recently, my two-year-old cousin Cameron has been diagnosed with autism. I would like, like to spread awareness to students about the disabilities and to teach them that everybody can be accepted. I want to make a difference at North Reading High School.
Great.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, the three girls behind you also...
Oh, yeah, they're members.
Why don't you tell us?
We have more chairs, Marissa.
Do you want to introduce Taylor and Emily and Rachel?
That's Taylor Connor, Emily Kaylos, and Rachel Semblaris.
And unfortunately, you know, I get the treat to meet Samantha herself, who I didn't meet back when we first met in March.
Yes.
The meeting was a little too late for her, but she's, she's a pretty, she's a pretty special little girl. She really is a great, great smile, a lot of fun, so.
I think this is a great club because one of the things that we as a school committee, and I know the school, the superintendent are proud of, is the inclusion program that we have here in North Reading. And it's not a program so we can just save money. The goal is, what's the best environment for the children, the student, to learn? If we can, if we can provide in district, a, a program that lets the student stay with children they know and be more comfortable, that's what we do. And, and I think we've done a really great job of that over the years and I think this club would be great because it would help to foster a more of an understanding of what we do as a school system, but also more of an understanding in the outside world on some of the challenges that these students face. So I think this is a great idea. I did have a question. In the Reading Club, that was last year you started it or?
No, I graduated from college a year and a half ago. No, it's okay. I'll take that as a compliment. That's a compliment.
Graduate from college, you're a great student.
No, I started the Samantha's Harvest Club when I was a sophomore and I graduated high school in, in 2008. So I held office as a vice president my sophomore year and president my junior and senior year. And as soon as we started the club, immediately got kicked off. You know, the administration, the faculty, the students were so supportive of it. I think in order to, we always say like the younger generation is really changing and in order to educate the younger generation, I think it's really crucial that you have this type of club in the school and also too, to work with such a great organization. Personally, I, I think the benefits of the club for me was not only I, I became a great leader, but I also, you know, got to kind of spread the awareness and as Marissa was saying, going into the middle schools and the elementary schools, and I think that's so important that you're not just working just at the high school level, but also working with the, you know, the younger students too, who are going to eventually be coming up to, you know, the high school someday. So it was extremely successful and I'm pretty proud of it, so.
Great.
Any other comments or questions?
I'd just comment on what Mr. Webster said about the inclusion and the superintendent, but I want to give some credit to Dr. Troutman too, because he had a lot to do with that over the fifteen years that he was there, so. How many chapters is it? Is there a Reading chapter?
Just Reading High started, yep.
Okay, so this would be the second chapter then?
Yes, and we'd like to keep expanding, so.
I was going to say, you, you as the Reading and North Reading can take the lead in, in spreading the word throughout other high schools in the state and that would be, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's exciting with Samantha's Harvest to have two chapters like this in the schools. We're always looking to expand and find new ideas and change what we're doing and not just raising money, but supporting other organizations when we can do it. And we're just so excited Marissa came to us and said she wanted to do something like this and with Delia being the former president and Julia joining our board, both of them joining our board this year, our, last night was their first meeting of our board, so, you know, the energy that they can bring to the organization and they can spread it and, and I know Marissa had a, had a really good turnout with the signup. How many did you have?
I had over 25.
That's great.
It's great.
Really exciting level of interest is employed.
Yeah, do you have a question?
I just had a comment that, you know, autism and Down Syndrome have affected my own, my own family, so I'm really impressed that this exists and will help teach sensitivity around how to handle disability and how to, how to think about it. It's so critical that we have those kinds of conversations, particularly with young people and, and I think this is just such an amazing opportunity for our community to embrace this. And I'm really impressed that you would bring this forward as a freshman and I don't know if I had that kind of drive when I was a freshman. It was great, but so I'm looking forward to hearing what you're going to be doing.
And someone mentioned how things are changing with, with the young people growing up. It wasn't too long ago, some of you don't remember, we institutionalized these people. They weren't allowed to go to school in, in North Reading or whatever town we were from. So I think to have this kind of club, as Karen said, to foster that understanding is some, is very...
Very critical.
Important.
And my, my great aunt had Down Syndrome and was one of those people who was institutionalized. And so it's a history of my own family to think about, you know, how far we've come in terms of handling it and, and how the discourse has changed. And it's such a positive thing, so, so bravo.
The students we've seen graduate from this school over the past several years has been just heartwarming and great stories.
Yeah.
Success.
Any further questions? Again, great job on the research, girls, and great presentation. So unless there's any further questions, I'll accept a motion to, oh, you have, you have advisors? Oh, you'll be, okay, great.
Yes.
So to approve a two-year pilot program, and just so everybody understands, with all our clubs, we always do a two-year pilot program to make sure that after two years there's still the interest and the, the program can keep going. So that's why we do a two-year pilot. So two-year pilot program for Samantha's Harvest Club at North Reading High School.
So moved.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, yes.
Well done.
Kathy, they do want to introduce the Youth Services Director, so I'm going to move to that next.
Don't worry. I'll be like, listen.
It's always great to see our high school students come in and present so well. We've been, we've been jumping around the agenda all night, so no need to stop that now and we'll, we'll jump to another stop in the agenda. Also related to the youth in our town, I understand that the Parks and Recreation Department has an announcement to make tonight.
Actually, good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Farrow. I'm a, a member of the Youth Services Committee, have been for the last seven or eight years. And I just wanted to, and I'm also a retired principal from some of the, I've lived here for sixteen years now. I just wanted to let you know that you approved the club tonight, the Gay-Straight Alliance. And when Erica Hansen, our Youth Services Director, left, one of our concerns is that that particular group not have any gaps. It was going well and we were very fortunate that somebody came forward to continue that group. His name is Phil Dardino. I know you know the name very well. And I just want to recognize him for the great job he's done continuing this group in, in the absence of a director. Phil?
Thank you.
And lastly, speaking of that, we have hired a new Youth Services Director. Took us a good two months and seventy applicants to wean through. We are very, very pleased with who we have found. She just started today and I just want to introduce to you Amy Lookowitz.
You want to say hello to us?
We're nice, don't worry.
Yeah, we're very nice.
Don't worry.
Well, maybe I am.
We're docile, no, we're docile, come on.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you, it's great to be here. I think this is my third meeting of the day. So I feel like I've been everywhere. I was in the middle school today, the high school today, just getting to meet some people, but the next week is going to be a lot of meeting kids. So they're going to be the focus of the next week, week and a half.
Great.
Excited.
It's great that, you know, I, I know it, it took a while because you had so many applicants, but it's great to get somebody in here and keep the momentum going. I know that our first two directors have done a great job building the program and it's, I think it's been a critical and a great addition to the town to have this position. A lot of people from the outside say, huh, North Reading, what do they need to, what do they need a Youth Services Director for? Look at how great the town is. It is a great town, but there's a lot of kids who need support, who need a place to go. go, place to hang out, place to do things. And I'm really pleased that we're able to welcome you tonight.
Thank you. And I congratulate you guys on passing the GSA today. I've been talking to Phil for a while about it, actually, a couple of weeks maybe. And I knew it was high on the priority list for that group to get recognized.
So what is your background?
My background is actually mostly working with school age kids. I worked for the YMCA Greater Boston for 10 years at Burbank and also in Woburn. In the last five years, I've been working with five-year-olds to middle school, but my program specialized in children with autism, actually. So I'm very, very looking forward to working with more middle school and teens. That total different change for me, but I'm excited about it. My family is a family of educators. My dad taught in Lynn Public Schools for 40 years, 18 in middle school, and the rest was at high school. And I think that's a good change for me, I'm excited about it.
Great, excellent.
I know you'd be spending much time with the superintendent.
Oh, yes. We've had our first email.
We've already been emailing, yeah.
We've had our first email.
When you get a chance, I'd like to talk to you a lot about Ms. Mullins and Ms. Clemmons. I don't know what your first impression is, but.
I learned today that evidently, everybody knows Rita Mullins.
I would say that.
Everybody knows Rita Mullins, the town's named after her.
She has a park.
This is one thing I will tell you, and Karen's right, she does have a park. But there's one thing I'll tell you, if you really want, if there's something you need to get done, and you're concerned that it might not get done, there's only one person to enlist.
Well, it's funny you mention that, because when I, Rita actually set up my interview, and I was driving to my first interview, and I drove past her park and I walked in, and I don't remember who introduced you to me, and I said, "Do you have a park?" And she said, "Well, yeah," but I blew it off, but I knew it was her.
They'll be putting up signs soon, "Welcome to Rita Mullenville." When you're driving to town, you know, instead of "Welcome to North Reading."
I do want to say, I think, you know, it's great to have you here, but I'm telling you, working with Lynn and Rita, two advocates for kids and for education and for the community. So I don't think you could be working with better people.
Thanks.
And Phil, thank you for all your help, too.
And I'll add, if you need us, just find us.
Yes.
Come and talk to us.
Will do.
And be, don't be a stranger. Anytime you have programs you want to talk about.
Oh, she'll be busy.
Call the superintendent and you can come in and let us know what's going on. It might be great to have you here every quarter.
Sure.
Any new things, you can let us know what's going on.
Will do.
Great.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Welcome.
All right. This was a fun meeting to come to, those students all.
They were great.
Good. Very good.
Impressive.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye now.
Okay.
Okay.
I gotta find where we are now.
We could do the.
We haven't done the school committee self-evaluation yet. I think that's, is that the last thing we have?
No, we have the contract.
Yeah, we have the contract, so why don't we do that first? We are going to take a vote tonight on the contract for the new director of Finance and Operations, Michael Conley. We negotiated with him, and then the school committee discussed the contract in the executive session. Ms. Willis, I don't know if you have the contract. I can say that it's a standard contract that all administrators have received over the past few years. Mr. Conley will be starting at a salary of $120,000. I don't know if you want to provide any details on the contract.
Sure. It will be a three-year contract. Mr. Conley will work 12 months out of the year. He'll be awarded 25 vacation days. He'll also be awarded 15 sick days per year, accumulated up to 220 days. He will have up to five days of personal leave. He'll have up to five days of bereavement. And he'll have an opportunity for reimbursement for earning graduate credit beyond his master's degree. And that is a standard contract for all administrators across this district.
And he either has recently received or will soon be receiving his master's degree, correct?
That's correct, this spring.
That's right. In terms of the accumulation of sick days, I want to make it clear, there's no buyback in this contract. With all the new administrative contracts, there are no buybacks. So you can accumulate those days, but unless you use them when you, you know, before you leave, they just go back into the, right, they fly away. Any questions or comments? I know that I was impressed with Michael, I'm looking forward to, he's going to start July 1st, but he'll also be in earlier for some orientation with Carl and the staff.
Five days in June, that is correct.
And when do we lose Carl?
Carl's last day is officially the 30th of June, but he's offering to work for the equivalent of three or four days in July to close out the books and to do the end-of-the-year report that's submitted to the State Department of Education.
Just to recap, Michael is currently the Director of Finance and Operations at Lincoln-Sudbury Regional High School, School District. And prior to that, he was in Wakefield, correct?
That's correct.
In the same position?
He was the business administrator for four years.
Right, in Wakefield.
And before that, Assistant Business Administrator in Wellesley.
Right.
And he also was the Director of Finance at a charter school prior to that.
The one thing we're excited about is he, one, brings, is going to bring a lot of energy to the, and ideas to the position, but he also has significant experience already.
For a young fellow, he has a lot of experience.
A lot of experience. He's really moved up the ladder quickly, so we're excited to have him.
May I just add one more thing? Prior to the June 10th school committee meeting, we'll have a short reception beginning around 6:15 to welcome Michael Conley to the school district. And then the chair will introduce him to the public. And Michael will be on camera just to talk a little bit about his experience.
I'm assuming non-alcoholic beverages only.
Red cups.
We'll be in the school going.
Juice.
What can we expect for the reception?
Water, cookies.
Cookies? I don't know.
We'll have some.
Cupcakes?
Drinks and some.
Oh, cupcakes, nice. That sounds good. Okay, any other questions or comments on Mr. Conley? Hearing none at this time, I'll accept a motion to approve a three-year contract for our new Director of Finance and Operations, Michael Conley.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you.
Hooray.
A great job by the screening committee again, too. Mr. Bauer served on it, and everybody else has served on it. Whittle down, we got three good finalists to interview, so.
We'll let you know 13 and a half years, but that same town, whether or not it was a good.
Okay.
Don't doubt me.
All right, something's happened to my, I've lost, I've lost my mind. No, here we go, okay. All right, next we have, this is the.
Mine's idea.
I got it.
I can't wait to find that soundbite and extract it on camera.
Third year, something that, another thing that the committee is pretty proud of, this is the third year we have undergone a self-evaluation where each member has, fills out the same form. It has been, we have been evolving the form over the years, and it'll probably evolve a little more next year. I will say this, that if you look at the numbers from last year to this year, in most cases, we have seen an improvement in how we rate ourselves. And I will be honest and say that this committee honestly fills out these forms. And there are many cases where one or two of us have, you know, have put a two or a three on a scale of one to four because we're honest in evaluating ourselves. And I think, I think the committee as a whole appreciates that honesty, because it's the only way that we can improve as a committee. And I think most of us have discussed that this is, this is an effective committee. We have disagreements, but we don't throw things at each other, yet.
Yet.
Yet, we both said yet at the same time. But.
Collaboration.
In the past, we had set, we had set a standard where we said, any category that scores a 2.5 or less, we will discuss that category and then address it in our goal-setting session, which we have in August. If we did that this year, we'd only have one thing to discuss, because there was only one category that came in under 2.5, and that's the one that always ranks low, which is engages in professional development among school committee members. So what I, I, the superintendent and Janine, we, the subcommittee, met last week, and we discussed, looking at all items where at least one person ranked that item a two. So when we go into our goal-setting session, you know, there are some, each, I ranked some two, Karen did, I think Jerry had a few, Michael, Michael won't be at the meetings, but this does include Michael's rankings, had some, a few areas where there were lower marks. And I think that that's a good start for us in terms of looking at our goals, areas that we can improve on. There were some new, I just want to focus on, there were some new categories, they're all in bold, adopted admission statement. Everybody gave that a four but me, and that's because I forgot that we had adopted admission statement. So if I could amend my vote on that, it now becomes a 4.0. I remember the admission statement after, I mean, the admission statement afterwards. Number nine was new, shares pertinent information with each other to prevent surprises and promote informed decision-making. That was a 3.8. Does homework and comes prepared to make decisions, that's a 3.8. I will say, this committee does a great job of doing its homework and is well-informed at every meeting that it comes to, understands the role of the individual as part of the whole group. That also was a 3.8. If you go down to 22, refrains from involvement in administration of the school system, a 3.6. Again, these are all on a scale of four. One of the comments that, for that one, was the committee allows the administration to run the school department while remaining well-informed with the curriculum and level of instruction. And I think that sums up the way, we don't micromanage, we don't interfere, we may make our opinions known at times, but we don't tell the, we don't tell the superintendent how to do her job. We just want to make sure that she's doing her job effectively.
And we're setting her up for success.
Exactly.
She wouldn't listen to us if we did something.
That's probably true.
She doesn't have to.
I know.
27, develops and uses data to assess effectiveness of educational programs. We'd only given this a 1.8 last year, and somehow it dropped off the, it wasn't on the survey this year. And that's one we probably should look at as we go and look at the goals. Because I know that Kathy has been giving us presentations on the use of data, but we need to make sure that we're aware of data on a regular basis, and not only test scores, but one of the things, and I know this is hard to get the information on, is how our students do once they leave North Reading High School and proceed to college or career or a trade or the military, you know, what happens after that. And the last new one was number 35. We see his regular reports with budgets and financial status for the system, and that's a 4.0 on that one. If anybody, does anybody have any questions or comments before I, I'm going to continue on some of the ones where we need to spend a little time on?
Mel, for the data one, is it possible for us to just share individually what we think we are so that we have a number for that this year?
Oh, yeah.
Since we missed it.
Yeah, let's talk about that one, because.
Oh, which one?
The data.
Number 27.
Number 27, it was somehow left off this year. Karen, what, I mean, what's your input on that?
Oh, I think we're, I think we're three.
Yeah, I'm the same way. I think we've gotten much better in using data. Cliff?
Yeah.
Three? Jerry?
Four.
Four, four for Cliff?
I'd say three.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think we've gotten better. I think we can continue to get more data. I think when a lot of people think data, they think numbers. But one of the things we've done this year, and this also goes to professional development of the school committee, is having teachers and administrators here to present to us the programs that are going on in the school, having the science team that was in tonight, the science team last week. To me, that's professional development, but it's also data. When I see that, when I see these high school kids, that's data. That says, we're doing a good job. These kids are bright, they know how to do research, they know how to put together presentation.
Articulate.
Articulate, exactly.
Exactly.
Just, so the ones, you know, understanding of state and federal laws. I think we have a. That's a difficult one to crack, because if any of us understood the state and federal laws, we'd probably be much happier. Yeah, we might, we not have to be sitting here. You know, I think we can always do a little better at that. I know, Jerry, I think you would have been appointed to that position, but I think, did you say Janine had expressed maybe an interest in taking that on?
I think that the position was the legislative liaison.
Right.
Does everybody get a bulletin?
The mask?
The mask bulletin on the legislative.
Yeah.
It may not be a bad idea if, once a month, we review, just quickly review that bulletin as a gender item.
That might be a good idea.
I'm just thinking in terms of just quickly going through it, and that way, everybody gets updated, and we don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but.
That's a good idea. And I know Janine had expressed an interest to Jerry to getting more involved with that area.
With that area, yeah.
I think that.
But that would help us, again, keep up to date with the changes in the law, I mean.
Right. I think that's a good idea.
MASC also has a couple of PowerPoints that are really good about summarizing the key state and federal laws, which we could also review as.
That might be a good idea, review those at, at a meeting, or two meetings.
And maybe even periodically, without, again, belaboring it, but reviewing the public meeting law and things like that, you know, the issue as to how you conduct meetings and subcommittee meetings and things like that, so.
The other thing I might suggest is maybe having Brad Jones and Bruce Tar in twice a year. Give us an update on what's going on, we can ask them some questions. That might be a good thing to do also.
So we just set a goal?
Yes.
For going to workshop.
Yeah, there goes our workshop. We have, we have all those goals now. Jerry, that's good.
Yep.
Jerry's setting, I know how much Jerry loves setting goals.
You just spearheaded a goal.
He did. You took the lead on a goal, Jerry.
That'll be the last time.
Number four, this is, as I said, we scored a 2.2 and engages in professional development. You know, some, a couple of the comments, not really sure additional professional development for school committee members is warranted. I believe much of our professional development occurs during meetings. We don't have to discuss it tonight, but I think this is an area, again, during the goal session, are there, are there better ways for us to get, to get professional development? And how much do we, how much do we really need?
I would propose anybody with less than 10 years on the committee goes through a in-house professional development seminar.
Poor Cliff and me, we're screwed.
Those people.
I'll have to go, too.
You will?
I don't have 10 years. I only have nine.
Oh, more than.
So all of us will have to go, but you.
Yeah, I mean, I've just.
Are you leading the course?
Yeah, are you going to give the course?
You can support the entire curriculum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, isn't it unbelievable? 13, shared governance through aligned subcommittees and distributive leadership. We did have some brief discussion about this last week during the reorganization. I think it's something to discuss during the goal meeting about, you know, rotating positions and et cetera. I think that's a good topic to discuss. 22, wait a minute, oh, 20, no, 21, demonstrates high levels of collaboration with superintendent to establish excellence in curriculum instruction. We did have one low grade on that, but one low ranking. I personally think that we collaborate really well with the superintendent. So, I mean, we can discuss that at the goal meeting, but I don't, unless anybody else sees any issues there, I don't, I don't really see anything, unless the superintendent sees issues.
No.
With the collaboration or lack thereof, no?
If he has no room on his schedule.
Maybe the HR director has time.
That's true, the HR director. We can meet with the HR director.
I know that because of collaboration. I know that because of collaboration.
Twenty-three, the involvement administration of the school system. There was one low response on that. So again, all the ones that have at least one low response, we can discuss at our goal, our goal workshop meeting, which will be in a couple of months.
Did we do thirteen yet? Because I know I gave that either a one or a two.
Yeah, I did thirteen. I said that.
Okay, so that's not...
Yeah, thirteen, I said that's definitely a, we had briefly broached it last week at our last meeting, and that's definitely, that's okay. Definitely for discussion, yes.
After twenty-one, excuse me, did you just say twenty-three or twenty-two?
I said twenty-one.
Yes.
And then I said twenty-two, I meant. I said twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Twenty-six. I gave, ensures adequate allocations for professional development needs. I, I gave that a fairly low grade, and I'll read the comments. Still feel we are lagging in this area because enough funds are not allocated to it. Someone else noted, we prioritize professional development, even within our tight budget. And I would agree with that, but I think the budget is too tight, so I think that should definitely be up for discussion. Let's see. Thirty-one establishes a clear coherent budget with a financial plan for one or more fiscal years. This is a good topic for discussion with our new Director of Finance and Operations coming on. He may have some other ideas as to better long-term planning, but I think all of us have discussed this and long-term planning for a town or for a school, or it is one year, basically, because we have no control over the, over the revenues from, from the state and the federal government. So I think we, the town has been doing a good job of trying to plan for long-term and capital projects, et cetera, but it's really hard to long-term plan the day-to-day operations.
We even tried to do an improvement plan for 2016.
Correct.
And fell short on that this year because of funding.
A modest, a modest plan.
Modest plan.
That was a modest plan on a, in a small area for a very modest amount of money.
Perfect example, Cliff.
And we can't get out of our own way with that because, and that's for one year. What would happen if we programmed it out for three or four or five years? You know, it'd be basically a waste of time.
And related to that, as part of that, it wasn't part of NRPS 2016, but we also had requested additional funds for more purchases of iPads and tablet computers, and we were unable to get that money at this time. So I think that's a good area to focus on at the goal workshop. Number thirty-eight, it's really along the same line, engages in capital, long-range planning linked to the financial plan of the district. There were one or two lower scores for that. And then the last forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five. Forty-three, there was one comment, I believe there was more than one comment, but school committee could find other ways of soliciting and obtaining feedback. I actually had a brief discussion with the superintendent on this, but, you know, we ask for public input every meeting and we get none, which you could say that's good, but, you know, it, I don't know how we extract more out of the community.
Well, actually, I don't know how you do that. What you do is you screw up.
Screw up.
And you'll get a room full very quickly.
I look at this as a glass half-full because we do, obviously, our meetings are open. I remember when I first started here, public input was limited to somebody raising an issue without any response or discussion from the school committee. They could raise something or they could say something, but if it wasn't on the agenda, there was no, no discussion about it. I think, too, that through the various organizations, whether it's PTOs or parent organizations, we get a lot of, I think the superintendent probably gets a lot of feedback. So I'm not sure exactly where we go with this either. I think our meetings are open up, annual budget session, that's another good example of, I think there were seven people at the session.
Affiliated with town boards or...
There were seven, seven people at the hearing, and those were advocates that we expect to be there, you know, so, I don't know. I'm not sure what the answer is.
We can talk more on the goals. I do think, though, that if we, on a regular basis, encourage more feedback, encourage people to write to us, to come to meetings. But I think, in a lot of ways, Cliff is right. If you're doing a good job, there's less, I mean, certainly, we got a lot of feedback, and we continue to get feedback over the school project when people perceive that there are issues there, so...
Every time you have a blip that the public doesn't like, you get response.
But this is definitely something...
A positive response necessarily, but response. And so far, you know, we, we've had a lot of meetings with no public presence, other than on TV.
But this will be at the goal...
Saying anything bad about those goals.
Right.
I would suggest that meetings are not the best way to engage people, and I actually don't like this category because it receives feedback. There's nothing about gets feedback and has the conversation.
Or encourages feedback.
To me, this category should be, there should be something around engagement, not just performing outreach. To me, it means like nothing. Like, these categories don't really capture engagement with our constituents. And is, we, we have an open door. It's really obvious. Anybody can contact us, like, I'm at a meeting, you know, we're in the public, we can go talk to people, but most of the time, people don't know what we do. And the ones that who are really invested in schools either know us or they think we're doing a reasonably good job because, you know, we're still here. But there are other constituencies that may or may not have access to us in the same way. And how do we ensure that their point of view and perspective is, is met also? They may not have children in the schools, they may, you know, just moved here. My constituency, which is most people who, you know, are young professionals and who have either small children or no children, you know, I know they don't engage.
And one of the things that I suggested to Kathy, and, you know, you have to be careful with these, but I know that other committees have, I don't know if they call it a gripe session, but I've seen this where, you know, twice a year, they say, the whole meeting is, we're going to open up the mic and let you come in and talk. And you have to be careful at how those are structured. Because it's not a formal meeting, per se, it's people come in and talk to us. But because, because we're assembled as a board, we do have to call it a meeting because it has to be posted.
Right. But I think there are, I think we can, during our goal session, really think about how we include information. This goes straight to the student, the school councils. We, we listen to their presentations. I really tried this year to figure out what their role was and how to incorporate it, and I struggled.
I'm right there with you, and Kathy can tell you that I had about a ten to fifteen-minute talk with her about that. And I know that she's working with the school councils. I guess it is a state law, correct, that there has to be a school council at every school?
That's correct.
But I agree with you. I, I mean, you listen to them, but I don't, you know, I don't have a good handle on that. And that is going to be part of the goal discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say this, too, that very frequently, and I'm not sure how many committees do this, but if we have a topic of discussion, we'll engage the audience in that somebody raises their hand and...
Yes.
Yeah. I don't think there's any question that during our meetings, but I did, you know, I did talk to Kathy about trying to figure out some ways that we can, you know, whether it's different communication channels or coffee, coffee clutches, socials, whatever, whatever, whatever you want. And it doesn't have to be the whole committee. It doesn't have to be, you know, a couple of committee members want to have a coffee with the superintendent. We can do that. So that'll be definitely for discussion at our goal meeting. And then Karen already mentioned the school improvement plans. And the last one is really along the same line, those last three. So I think these, the forty-three, forty-four, forty-five really, really tie together, and we can, we can go over those. I mean, I would say in general, again, I think great, honest feedback, and, you know, I think as a committee, we do well. I think if we didn't do well as a committee, then these scores would be a lot lower. I don't know if the superintendent has any input on...
No, I applaud the committee for going through the exercise of self-evaluation. We always talk about reflection as being an important part of the learning process, and very often, we don't make time for that, which really is the last stage of learning something, reflecting on what you've learned. So not only do you assess your performance, but you use that assessment in setting goals for the next year, which I think is a very positive process. I don't think it's a common occurrence across all school committees in the state, and I applaud the work that you do, and, because we're always striving to do better. We do that with our students, we do that with our faculty, and you've proven that we do that with our school committee. So I applaud your efforts.
I would say it's like magna cum laude that we...
Is it? I should have added them all up and given us a real score. I didn't do that. I didn't do a cum for us.
I think it's pretty high.
Yeah.
I just want to point out, and I think, you know, we didn't talk a lot about things where we've improved, but number thirty-two integrates policymaking into the budget process. Improved a lot. There, there's a lot of things in here that have improved, adequate allocations for professional development, you know, where we had goals and we worked toward them.
I was going to say, the thing on thirty-two, because a couple of years ago, we had a big problem with that. Like, we were like, we really don't, well, we don't, and then we kind of talked about it, and then we've done things to make sure that, and the reason why, that would have been higher, but I think I marked us down a point there because we didn't approve NRPS 2016. Because that was a case where that's clearly part of, you know, policy and education and we, and the curriculum, and we couldn't put that in our budget, so. But the fact that we do take that into account now, I think you're right. I think...
Yeah, something happened, and a lot of it comes from this.
We've addressed, right. Right. And I think, as superintendent said, we, if we address these, we address these every year now at our goal-setting meeting, among other goals that we need to set. Jerry usually comes with a couple pages full, and, and then we move from there.
We improved in all but four of the items out of the forty-five on this.
Very good.
That sounds to me like you did pretty good.
Good grade. And there's still more room for improvement?
Always.
Always.
I look forward to our goal-setting process.
I do, too.
Jerry?
Uh-oh. There was one comment that you made earlier, Mel, about honest evaluation, and there were twos and threes.
Right.
And the fours that were given were also just as honest.
Right. No, no, they are, they're all honest. I mean...
I gave a couple ones, and I don't know where I did.
I didn't see a one from you. I think you only showed a two from you. I'll have to look when I go home.
Go back and check, because I'm pretty sure I put ones.
You got to have some ones in there somewhere.
Okay, I'll look.
I'm a pretty severe grader. Either I'm a one or a four.
You gave a lot of twos, Karen. I don't know. Maybe I got the wrong, maybe I got the...
I may have missed one.
She was just evaluating herself.
No.
What can you say, right?
No. I think, I do, I appreciate every, the time that's put into this. Every member put a lot of time into this, including Mr. Kusakji. It's, you know, you give comments, means you have to put thought into it. It's not, we're not just dashing it off, so I appreciate all the members doing that.
Awesome. Well done. Thanks for compiling this.
Thanks for filling it out. Okay, next, where are we? Are we...
Actually, from a personal standpoint.
Thanks.
Subcommittee report, subcommittee report.
It's very easy, except for Jerry, because Jerry doesn't use the computer, and he handwrites his comments.
Did you have any trouble reading my printing?
No.
What, I'm, excuse me, I compiled a previous two, and you submitted one of them handwritten.
When I did, yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Kind of just being obstinate or something. All right. We don't have any minutes, right? Budget update, we don't have any. Staffing?
Not at this time.
Bids and donations?
None at this time.
Subcommittee updates? None, right.
Finance planning team met. The budget has moved forward, but Board of Selectmen has voted to approve the omnibus budget.
The warrant's out.
Warrant's out.
The warrant is out, and we have a town meeting on June third.
Yep.
And the evaluation subcommittee just gave their report.
We just gave our report right now. Administrator report?
Yes. Very briefly, I handed out a supplement to you this evening. Chairman Webster just referred to NRPS 2016, and as part of the budget vision, that's very connected to the strategic plan, we had moved forward four items for funding for the FY14 school budget. And we were not able to include any funding for any of those four items at the time that the original budget was approved. But I am pleased to report to you this evening that the no-atom science materials will be purchased for grade five for the next school year. That was one of the four items, and I know that Mr. Kusakji felt very strongly about that. So I'm very pleased to be able to sit before you this evening and say that we will move the phase-in of those science materials into grade five next year. So again, this purchase was one of the four recommendations made during the FY14 budget development process, and this will move forward. We're still working to try to fund one of the others, but this was very important. This is where we have a significant influence on what takes place in the classroom, so